... visitors to get to the studios easily. We are very much aware that that was not a simple task and that there was expense involved. And we're very grateful. It was brought to our attention by a number of people visiting our studios that they noted that it was easier to get through town than they expected. There's a letter that I gave them to Carrie thanking you all for what you've done on behalf of the committee. And I just wanted to express our thanks and if there's anything we can do for you, ever, let us know.
Call the public speaker.
I have no speakers now.
Is anyone in the room who should speak?
Good evening, Vince. Good to see you again, council members, staff, and fellow residents. My name's Craig Simon. I've been here, it's been a few years since I've been up here, but I'm here on behalf of the highway and the roadhouse. My profession is an attorney, and I'm also a motorcycle rider. Been riding for over 20 years, but coming up since my open highway. Now, there's an event coming up, 19th through 21st, that Mr. Jankowski prepared a memo detailing what's going on at the event. And I just wanted to assure everybody, as far as the event goes, what's being planned, what's being done, to make sure it's safe, that it doesn't interrupt the town, it doesn't interrupt any of the traffic, and it's going to benefit for all the merchants here in Cave Creek. What's being done, it's called builder showcase, basically showcasing motorcycle builders, custom builders here in Arizona. They're going to be up there showcasing their custom motorcycles. As part of that, parking will be up at the roadhouse. The roadhouse parking lot will be exclusively for motorcycles. In addition to that, there's going to be a shuttle, Mark has a shuttle that he transports if people want to go from the roadhouse to the highway and back and forth. So, there won't be a lot of pedestrian traffic, but they have that option, so that'll help people that are parking up there. Also, Rental Service Corporation is letting him park employees' vehicles up there, as well as during the day. He's got a cooperation of Carols and the Chip so that other vehicles can park there. So, the idea is this whole thing is going to be planned safely, everything's broken down, he's got his permits, and the traffic will be to a minimum. There's not going to be, obviously, any parking on the street, no lanes will be shut down because, as you know, we've got the construction project now which prevents that. So, if anybody has any concerns, Mark and staff, everything's been prepared, so it goes smoothly. And as you know, the motorcycles that typically come up here, like me, they're professionals, they spend money, they respect the town, they follow the rules, and at the end of the day, they go home unencumbered. So, it shouldn't be a problem, but just wanted to be here to address any concerns that any of the mayor or any of the council members have. Thank you.
Is public comment still open? Okay, council will proceed. A single item on the consent, and that's the approval of the first 2016 River Council meeting. Motion of the council. Show them up. Second, move them second. All those in favor, please, you have a saying. Hi.
Hi.
Opposed, the ayes put away. Under the general agenda items, council discussion, interaction to the town manager, to the town manager and town attorney regarding the property located at 41355 North Columbus Springs Road in the town of Cave Creek.
Mayor, I have been told by one of our citizens, it's 41355.
Let's correct that. 41355 with the area. 41355. Okay. Citizens, I call your attention to the council action needed, and that is to give direction to staff. Council is not voting on anything one way or the other to give direction to staff tonight. Is there anything from staff before I go to the public comment?
Mayor, members of council, since some time now you've asked us to look at options, we've reached an executive session on a number of options, and we'll now, I think we need to explore what those options might be.
Thank you, council. Open the public comment. Does any one wish to speak on the agenda?
I have no speakers now.
Does anyone wish to speak on the agenda, either number one? Mr. Smith.
Kerry Smith, Department of Cave Creek. Some time ago, we discussed this same issue, this council discussed this same issue, namely the operation of commercial enterprise in residential Zong area. The original agreement called for vehicles being repaired to garage at the end of each day. That didn't happen, and the set of vehicles kept appearing. Neighbors have presented pictures of the situation in this area, and at that time, one of the discussions that I looked for, the council proposed a mediation session between neighbors and owners of this property that had commercial activity to try to resolve problems. I gather that mediation happened, and the number of vehicles increased, and the owners were given the opportunity, were given the permission to build huge burnings all around the property that, by one definition, at least disfigured the property further, but it prevented one from seeing, unless you saw the vehicles piled on top of each other, which they often were, seeing all the vehicles in the lots. Would it be useful for the community to hear what the options are that were discussed at the executive session? I guess I was surprised when I heard that options were discussed at the executive session, and no one said what the options were. Are we going to learn those at some point? That would be, and it's hard to react in the public commentary without knowing what the options are. So, this seems backwards to me. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I give you advice, you as a council could ask me to give you the options publicly if you wish.
Understood, Chancellor. Does anyone else wish to speak? Okay, we're going to immediately come back to council here again. The motion before the council is to direct the town manager and town attorney to address the ongoing neighborhood concerns with respect to the property located at 41355 North Columbus Springs Road in the town of Cave Creek. The question, town managers, I recall, the, in order for mediation to be successful, both sides had to sit down, they were, my friend. And that did not occur in this instance, though it was offered for that to happen. It actually did not take place.
Both groups met individually with the town, but it was not.
Okay, council. Councilman Litzke, would you like to start the room discussion?
I'd just like to point out that, what, what, no. No, I guess I can.
Executive session, I don't know what I can with the answer, so I'll say.
Let me try to be helpful. I will start off. This particular neighborhood issue has been going on for more than a day. It's been going on for approximately five years with passions on both sides of the matter. And citizens have looked to council to come up with a resolution to this matter. I, in order to get the discussion started, to give a brief history, in 2008, when council enacted the home occupation rule, this gave people the opportunity to, given the economic prices that we were all going through at the time, to stay in their homes and conduct business out of their homes if they wanted. There was, council did not look into the future to see, well, exactly what type of businesses might that be. And if you were in a home working on a computer, that's probably the time. If you were doing something else, the home occupation rule was so broad that it actually allowed for that. So, maybe one of the directions council might give to our legal counsel is to relook at the home occupation rule. But this matter, from what I can tell over the past five years, and from what I hear almost weekly at the office hours when citizens come in and speak affirmatively to the mayor, this issue is still very much active in that neighborhood after. So, if that helps get the discussion started. Mayor, councilman Essler, anything?
Well, we have, we have some suggested options in front, and we discussed them with the mayor. No decisions have been made yet. And I look to council to, are we at liberty to discuss items 1, 2, 7?
Mayor, members of council, are you at liberty to discuss whatever items you wish to talk, you're not at liberty to discuss comments that were made during the session.
Okay. So, we have those seven items that have been discussed. As Dr. Smith pointed out. And where do you want me to go from there, Mayor? Do you want me to read them?
I have no direction to give you except to give you the steps.
Number one is vehicle restrictions. A, heavy equipment. B, commercial. C, abandoned. Two is burn restrictions. A, fence restrictions. B, buffer restrictions. Three, noise. Four, nuisance. Five, design review, which we kind of rejected because we don't know what that means. Six, dust. And I commented on that. Seven, harassment claims. So, those are the things that we discussed. And I'm not at liberty to divulge what each member of this council said as far as their input is concerned.
Vice Mayor.
I think now is the time, first, to give our direction here independent of the executive session. So, I would ask council to look at, as a practical matter, tightening up the abandoned vehicle definition, what abandoned vehicle is, and bring some options back for us to look at so we can, in a public meeting, discuss them and either go with it or run with it. Well, I understand there's always a balancing between the concern of the deterioration of the neighborhood as a whole versus property rights, so that's one. Two, I think we should look at a tightening up of the commercial vehicle definition for that same purpose, on that same basis. I think there's a possibility that interjecting the professional landscape review to burners or buffers, whichever is the appropriate definition, I'm not sure, big mounds of dirt, that's short of having a design review, which doesn't get swallowed very well in Cave Creek, it never has, and I'm not suggesting that, but it's short of that where, at least, there's not, we'll be satisfied that there's no structural or other integrity problems with these burns if they do develop. So, if you look at those three ordinances, maybe we can avoid, you know, having Hatfields and McCoys viewed neighborhoods all across Cave Creek night to night, because it's not healthy, it's just not. And I don't think it does, I personally, to me, don't think it does a, although it's a balance, I don't think it doesn't deserve the property rights on these specific topics.
Councilman Litzke?
My only comment would be just to state that we take the issue very seriously, all of us do, and we've discussed it up here multiple times, and we aim to get to a resolution that works.
Councilman LeBlanc?
Thank you. Staff has worked very hard on this. There are a number of us who have been out there, who have talked with the neighbors. It's a commitment on our part. I don't see easy solutions. Having revoked the home occupancy business permit was certainly a good start. It's not clear to me that that has had the consequences that we intended, the benefits that we intended. I think it would be valuable to look to other communities, counselor, and to see what we can do with regard to those communities. One of the great difficulties here is that our ordinances are written in such a way that we have two problems. One is definitions of what various things are within those ordinances, what's a burn, what's a fence, et cetera. Another difficulty that we face is that what works in one situation doesn't work in another situation, and we're going to have to deal with that. There are people in Cave Creek who think it's very important that they have rights to do with their property what they want to do with their property. I think that's great, but I don't think I'd want to have this kind of use of land next to my property, and I think that we owe it to our citizens to give to them what we would want for ourselves.
Councilman Essler?
I think a couple of people, especially the vice mayor, have hit on the predicament. The predicament is we're dealing with private property. And as Tom alluded to, I'm not sure we'd like to have this property up. I've been out there twice, I've met the owners, and I'm convinced that, to a certain degree, in my opinion, and when you say is my opinion, they have not done the things they said they would do. I know how many vehicles I saw when I was there with the marshal and the units. And we're indicating now that that continues to grow. Some of the commitments and promises the owners made to move some of the equipment, to my knowledge, has not happened. So, it's an issue for town, and it's especially an issue for those folks that live in and around it. Some of these options are difficult at the very best to import. Small town, budget, we have a sheriff, et cetera, and so we have one marshal. And I don't know, we went there before. As the chairman of HDB and following the vice mayor's footsteps, when we did the cottage industry and the businesses and sent out a survey form to ask all these folks, how many FedEx trucks they had come to the house, UPS, et cetera, et cetera, and started rural war three, four, and five, and made it extremely clear that they were private property owners and they could do as they dare and plead. And sometimes it was longer than that. So, I think what we're doing tonight is we're trying to resolve an issue that's ongoing. In my opinion, we have an excellent attorney, and he has laid out some choices. So, having said that, I'd like to hear from the rest of the council.
Councilman LeBlanc?
I'm anxious to say that majority of us truly believe in private property rights as well, but when they spill over, it's time to take a look at where we're at, where we're going, and what's important, so that health and safety and welfare of those who live, not only on the property, but around the property, can expect that certain things will get done and be done to mitigate any future altercations that could result in them being followers of the property rights. So, with that, Bill, Mr. Simmons will be doing his best to bring back for us some of the thoughts and ideas that we had, and hopefully they'll resonate well with those who are sitting in the audience today.
Councilman LeBlanc?
See this as, as a situation where someone's success eventually brought them down, they were way too successful, and they were doing out there as far as, as far as they're, they're making money and then fairly not following the rules of the, of the occupation, home occupation permit, which is something that we need, should tighten up, but that's how we got here to begin with. But I can tell you, having been a victim of a, a neighborhood dispute, a long run neighborhood dispute for about five years of my, of my first five years in Cave Creek, it's not a lot of fun, and escalation is what happens when you begin to walk onto people's property and take photographs and trespass there, then you're just exacerbating the issue, and they're going to come around and do things back to you. And this is what's happened here for a long time, there's been a lot of animosity going on. I'm always, I'm going to be very mindful of the fact that when you do something for someone, you do something against someone else, so that you're concerned about what comes forward, but have to look at it then. But it's unfortunate when neighborhood disputes get this way, especially right now in our town.
I'm going to assume that the vice mayor's remarks were, were actually a motion of correction.
Yes, sir.
And I would second those. The only thing I want to add, as a friendly amendment, the vice mayor's steps is, while your research, the vice mayor asked, and which I think council is going to agree to, to take a look at that home occupation motion that council initiated in 2008.
Glad you said that.
Counselor, this is an issue, a theme that has played out in Cave Creek before and will do so, yours from now, and that is private property rights and community rights. So, all those in favor of the vice mayor's motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, the ayes put away. Thank you, council. Agenda item number two, council discussion and direction to the town manager to begin administering the banner program in the town of Cave Creek. Town manager.
I guess I can start. I brought this, you guys, as a follow-up to a meeting we had about 90 days ago with respect to the banner program, and we got two status reports, and out of my own observation, I haven't seen the concerns that we brought up in those meetings passed along or completed, and that's why we have it here. And let me just also say that we need to absolutely clear that we couldn't work out running it so that it was a win-win, and that the banners were improved, that the maintenance of the plastic blue boards were improved, that past events, those banners removed and new banners put up, and the overall appearance of the banners maintained, that we would bring it back to the town.
Yeah, council, I agree with the vice mayor. I think it's a program that started in the right, was in the right intent, just fell off the wayside. For the nine poles, one of them is administered by the town, I remember, the other eight were under the CCMEA. So, at least myself, the captain and staff, we don't have any issues with the project stuff to bring that particular program back into the town's code, considering it's a common asset, the nine poles, the right of ways, other forces, and all the work. So, thank you.
Okay, we'll go to public comment on the agenda.
Name's David.
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm actually just here to answer any questions that town council had. To be honest, I know how the program got started, I was part of it. As it exists, I, this is personally, not for the CCMEA, I don't like the program. You're the merchants association, the board knows how I feel about it. So, are there any questions? Evelyn got together with Peter and Mambi, and this was the agreement that they hammered out, and that's kind of where we are.
Was this before or after this document, we had our meeting with Evelyn? Were you at the meeting with Evelyn?
I was not at that meeting.
So, this is dated September 9th, 2012.
From the record, that, that was the agreement that was done, my other meeting, that the two assigned council members were not aware of, or at least didn't appear at, and that was Mr. S. R. and I. Then, we asked for a second meeting, and we had, we also brought it to council, and there was direction to the town manager, specific direction, about problems we saw, and if we could get it resolved, that's fine, but if we couldn't, that we need to talk about taking it back. We had that second meeting, which was about 90 days ago, where the five concerns were specifically addressed in the bulletin notes, I know, and talked about whether it's legal or not, and Evelyn agreed to all those follow-ups, and frankly, we hadn't seen the evidence that any of those, for instance, there were going to be upgrades on the aluminum, little commercial clips that clipped the cross pieces so that it didn't look like it was somebody's there.
Oh, so it didn't look like they were kind of bending them?
Well, they also aren't just, you know, galvanized and look like they were adding.
Yeah.
It doesn't speak well for the town, and it doesn't speak well for our mediums, and that was going to be done in two weeks, and they said, well, no, we've got 90 days, and it's not been at all, so. And there were other issues with the maintenance of the signs. So, can I ask you a question, Dick? I'm sorry, I'll be, talk over you.
You didn't.
That's before. That's before, and that does not address some of the issues that we had, that we, that were followed up on the second meeting.
The individual, the individual signs themselves, that's not something that the merchants association can control, that would be up to the individual lessees or the people putting up the signs. If the, for example, we use frontier gems, I'm responsible for if it rips, tears, or anything like that, getting a replacement, the design of it, that would be for the individuals.
Right, and, and.
We are concerned, Mayor, probably some quality issues, and I agree with Mark, however, we have to have some level of quality out there, and some of the signs that were put out there, some of our banners, which is in the background, are out there, so we want to have, we have, we have the right to dictate the quality of the signs going up there.
That would absolutely hurt.
Same with the hats, same right.
I don't have any other questions. Anything else?
Well, I have a question. Are, are you standing up there saying you, you want to do the banners, or you don't want to do the banners?
For, for the merchants association, it's an administrative nightmare, it would be better, okay, speaking for the merchants association, it would be better if everything will run out of a, every step of it, out of a single group organization, that would be the town.
Councilman Essler, and then Councilman LeBlanc?
I understand, my impression of what Evelyn does is she's extremely confident that she's overworked.
That's exactly correct.
Councilman LeBlanc, question?
Has the CCMEA made money on the signs for this program?
I believe that we've made a little bit, the towns made some, we've made some according to the agreement, but it's not anything, the original intent, as I recall, was to give merchants association at some point after everything had been paid off, an avenue of a revenue stream, and this is not going to be it.
You came nowhere near that.
Nowhere near expectations. I mean, originally, we were talking about 12 or more and down to eight, because the deal with the state, ADOT, county, whatever it was, down on Carefree Highway, made those not impossible, but highly unlikely, but lots of paperwork, so that just didn't make any sense to go through that.
Okay. Public comment is still open on this? If there is none, that, let me bring the. If there is none, that, let it bring that back to council for direction to be given to the town manager. Counsel, you have to make a motion.
Yes. Move to direct the town manager to begin administering, administering the banner program for the town of K- Creek.
Motion made and second, counsel Nessler.
I think we have pretty much outlined what we're dealing with. And this is certainly no inflection on the people that stepped up to the plate. Just a footnote, she had difficulty collecting the money for the signs. She's very, very busy and as Peter pointed out, the town manager, we need the town to be in a better position to monitor and make better standards in signs if we choose to go down that road.
Counsel LeBlanc, you have a second?
I think the number of options they have here would work.
That kind of sounds, doesn't it? Anything else from counsel?
Just so I'm clear, this has, from my perspective, bringing this to town council and having the meetings and following up, had absolutely nothing to do with the wheres, or whys, or who's with respect to how this thing got off the rails. But we do have the responsibility to put our best foot forward when we're designing our mediums, mediums and I'm going to make sure that our public property is a plus, well, not a negative. So for whatever reason, and without judging the reasons, it hasn't been. And so I'm happy that we'll take it back and if it looks like it's too big of a, if you come to something like the conclusion that they have, that it's too big a burden for the bank, then we just, you know, cut them off at the ground and get some vegetation.
Yeah, I can't do that in three months.
Counsel LeBowski.
I just wonder whether it's appropriate here or maybe not to talk about the specifics of how the town now will go on the program or is that?
The town manager will bring that back to the council. That's what we're checking.
Counsel LeBlanc? Yeah, I'm unfortunate, this program came to us from the CCMEA with a possible way of not having to come to the town and get the contract, what we call it, money yearly of ten thousand dollars to support the events that they hold. And it's unfortunate in my mind that it didn't work. The best of intentions were there. When they brought it to us, it just sometimes things fail for no one's fault.
If there's nothing else from counsel, if there are, all those are favorite motions, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes voted aye. May the mayor direct the town marshal to put some fresh air into the chamber? Okay, thank you. The agenda item number three, presentation of the town manager. Justice suggestion. By the town manager or town marshal, town of K- Creek, regarding the update of the preparations for the builders showcase special event at the Highway Route six seven four six, I assume that address is correct, East Cave Creek Road to take place on February the nineteenth through the first, two thousand and sixteen. Town manager?
Mayor, councilor, I had a couple of counselors ask me about the preparations for the builders showcase event. I think it was pretty well explained and highlighted by the counselor and during the car of the public. But I did give you a memo, this was in your package, showing some of the highlights of that particular program, to think we take into consideration. Probably most importantly, is that we have shuttle service, which we go back and forth, and that there is no on-road parking. That seems to be the largest concern. I know the proprietors met with both town marshal and had a discussion with our planning department, special permits were needed to be done. They complied with everything we asked. And I don't think there's anything else needed at this time. This tends to be the smaller of the two events. I think quite weak means the larger that, that we, that would require a little more thought, a little more preparation of what we want to do in that particular one. But this one seems pretty straightforward. And having discussion, like bike, train, project, should be where they have both lanes open on the road during the event, by the end of the month.
Questions of the town manager? Okay, I see the applicant is here. Mr. Shalg, would you wish to speak for your attorney?
Well, I'm happy to address any questions, Mr. Mayor, or any of the council has been addressed earlier.
Anything from the council?
I'm just curious, I think the planning is pretty rock solid. My only question about your presentation was the shuttle service. I'm going to guess that not a lot of people are going to want to wait in line to get on a shuttle, to get from the roadhouse to anywhere else. So there's probably going to be more pedestrian traffic than they anticipate. And is there any, anything in place to deal with that? Repeat my question. Just to keep traffic moving. And for the safety of pedestrians.
Well, I mean, we have sidewalks and so forth, or we have area walks, you know, back and forth between most of the locations as well as the shuttle. We've been kind of using the shuttle throughout this entire season, you know, even with all of the, you know, road construction, the roadhouse, it really has not been doing that much, no of the challenge.
I'm not assuming a problem. I'm just wondering if that's, that's something that you consider, that's all.
And keep in mind, we're talking about between the roadhouse and the hideaway. So you're talking roughly about two blocks.
Right, well, that's why I'm saying the shuttle, why I don't know.
I think it was more for people that maybe handicapped a little challenge so that couldn't walk all the way down there.
Okay.
You also need counsel. Yeah, I believe counsel, those views.
I want to thank you for letting us know which other restaurants have offered parking. And I think that might go to Mark's question of people going across the street. My question to you, Peter, actually, is do you think that most of the road cases will be off the road and that the interiors are going to be done, the mediums are going to be done, or are we still going to have those road elements sitting out on the street?
We had the bike, train, project meeting this morning. My discretion with the project engineer voiced the static improvement in parking for the meetings and for the side of the roads. He says he should have it done in the next couple of weeks and it should be done for you by the time, he may not have the striping all done, so it definitely got the date.
So they'll want all of those?
Well, I mean, they still have the workshop to do at the, 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 the , some other small inbox they have to take care of. So the major will be done. The story and the striping won't be done for him, but all the major aspects will be done. There's some other side things that will be done that I do not see affecting this law, to be honest with you.
Well, as I had written, after hearing that we helped with the hidden in the hill, I was wondering if the same thing could be done for the builders. I guess make sure that those are out of the way so that we have two lanes of traffic available. I think, Mark, I'm not sure your question had more to do with striping for pedestrians to pass or not, but I think if both are parking across the street, we want to make sure that they're safe too. Because it's for the road.
From what I understand, you know, that's, you know, this is coming up weekend. It's, there's chunks of the road there, there's just, there's no way that lanes each way can be, can be opened up, you know, one of those, you know, the, whatever removed. Otherwise, we would have a situation that happened last weekend where a car was actually stuck into the meeting and we had to tow it out and so forth. Or are you talking about bike, which one are you talking about?
No, I was actually, I'm talking about your builders' lane. So that's, that can't be done. There's no way the elements.
That's a priest, in my, that's much smaller than we see that here.
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, the number of bikes that we do park inside the doorhouse parking lot alone, the supply side, and maybe other bikes that you see throughout town, town would be visiting those establishments, you know, as they do, you know, every year. And when a bike comes around, if you have Peter and himself, we'd all sat down and be like, you know, Mark, or Mr. LeBowski would come on down and sit down to help plan out those. And any, I don't know, you guys that want to kind of sit in on that, more than welcome that. I'm always welcome, always happy. Open to some constructive criticism. I mean, we were asked, when I was asked to bring bike to the next level, back in LA, the same is what you guys are dealing with, with other issues in town as far as property rights and everything else you guys just discussed. I was asked to build something. And, you know, it took off because we have a real cool town here. And even people moved up to this area to ride motorcycles, and I assure you, you know, they're not patch orders and they're not, you know, outlaws and everything else. So anything that you guys can do to help us out as far as, you know, business owners as well as town staff planning an event that has related to what it has, I greatly appreciate it.
Well, it is a symbiotic relationship because anything that we do in town brings dividends to us and we also want to make sure that people are safe.
Absolutely. And I, and once again, I want to make it clear that, and I live the saying, no matter whether you're on horseback, riding a motorcycle, driving through town in a car, I'll do whatever I can to make sure that we keep everybody safe, people, okay?
Counsel, you love a white states.
Counsel LeBlanc, you have a question?
And again, thank you for bringing all this business into town, this has helped us all. What options do you have if you do not have sufficient parking in the planning of locations?
I figured I'd call you and you'd help me. You know, it's the same as what happens on a, any given Friday night. You know, we noticed a huge decrease where the buffalo chip burned to the ground. Before that, we had cars parallel parked along both sides of the street every Friday night. So we'll do the same thing that, you know, that Larry does, or that, that, you know, when they have the concert over at Harold's or, or Biggles Grease Eats has their, you know, white trash party, or whatever it is, we'll all work together and do the best job we can to make sure everybody is safe. You know, I can't tell you how many nights that we're doing our business and everybody else is, you know, home sleeping and so forth, and how we do look out for each other. You know, I have many a times walked across the street to help out some of Larry's patrons and he has done the same for me. I've even done it with TC. Right? So, you know, to me, I think, you know, we're kind of blessed to have a small, little, eclectic town and everybody enjoys coming up here, whether you're, you know, on a horse or riding a motorcycle, or just coming up to see the snow, or whatever, whatever it is, you know? But as long as we all do what we can to make it a good experience for everybody that comes and visits our town, that's, that means we're doing, that's what we're doing.
Would you like the TC remark to lead us to the record?
No.
Yeah, I would just suggest that, you know, I, I mean, you've saved, you've nominated you for saving. Say, Mark. I was so excited about this project. This is the first time for this particular project.
No, it's actually about that. It's actually the eighteenth one.
I'm sorry, you're getting, I, I don't like to person I invite you out this weekend.
You'll be with your bikes and I'll be with my person. So I appreciate your attention.
Okay.
Okay, counsel is not taking action. This is just an update to keep up with the event. Thank you. On to agenda item number four, last of the general agenda items. As council review the town rule back from a five-day work week to a four-day work week and the session, attend to the town by September two thousand and sixteen, July the five-day work week, alert to add Saturday to the four-day work week. How confusing was this to rate the PM in order to better serve the K- Creek citizens? This is put on the agenda. Counsel LeBowski?
Yeah, in my defense, I thought that that was a draft of what would eventually be slightly revised. But my, my question was because I was not here at the time that the five-day work week went to four days. And I understand, I understand why it happened, when it happened, but what I don't understand is why at that point, and maybe it wasn't meant to be permanent, why it was made permanent. I asked, I asked about it when I first came on council and I was sort of laughing that, don't ever bring that up, that'll never change. And so I didn't for quite a while. And then I got a couple of calls from citizens about it and I thought, well, let's bring it up and, and talk about it and see, see if it's, if it makes sense to get back to where the rest of the country is virtually, add a five-day work week and, and see what might be involved in getting there.
Good to bring up. It has a identical origin as the previous agenda item, and that is when things were happening in two thousand and eight. This was something that came up as part of the reclamation of the citizens of the White Paper. And it was instituted for cost-saving measures at the time, but as, and I don't know if it had a temporary or permanent flavor to it. Back then, I think it was temporary, that, you know, let's try this because we're going to save money and we'll help it through this time period. However, after the town got into it, into the rhythm of the four-day work week, it was the things that came out of it that were not foreseen, the cost savings, that was foreseen. But how the staff worked and how the staff affirmed it, the four-day work week, that is something that came out of the seven o'clock in the morning to the five o'clock. And since two thousand, I've never gotten a call from any of our citizens or developers, outside developers, about the G I issue with the open five days. So the community just seems to have accepted. Having said that, do you think we should keep it or not keep it? That's the other issue. Counsel LeBlanc?
It's my understanding that having gone back to the forty-hour week for all of our employees, there were individuals who found it difficult to get town services during the regular business hours and those individuals appreciate having the longer day.
Counsel Nessler?
I got the same call as you did, Mark, and I answered, lost one, I had a league of voicemail. Here's my spin, as the mayor has indicated, it saves about twenty thousand dollars a year minimum. Return off the computers, return, the only thing we leave on are the service. And it's my understanding that we have a moderate to, not so moderate turnover. Many of the employees who have that three-day weekend have second jobs. In addition to that, affordable housing is very difficult for some of these folks to find in this geographic area. I think one of the guys, and I don't know, again, verify this, drives all the way from Preston. A couple of them come from Anthem. Some of them, like the town clerk, and she chose to live where she lives, is downtown Phoenix. So in addition to that, the one call I returned was a guy named Gary Carter. He's been here longer than I have. He's lived in Cave Creek for thirty-six years and he was asking me, as he did you, for my support. So I phoned him and asked him how many council people did he have contacted and he told me. And I explained to him what I just explained to you, some of the reasons why the four-day work week works. And you mentioned the rest of the world, that's not necessarily true.
No, I said the rest of the country, not the world.
Let's get it narrowed down, the impact on us. There are twenty-eight cities and towns that have a four-day week. There are ninety-one in the state of Arizona. And most of those, as the former co-chairman of the Small Communities, have four-day weeks. Twelve of them are here in the East Valley. And they like that. And it's a huge cost savings. The essential requirements for police is required or supplied by the sheriff's department. The town marshal is available twenty-four seven. The water department is open twenty-four seven. Emergency services are available. So rather than rock the boat, I can't support your motion.
It's not a work, it's not, we're just in discussion.
Okay, I retract that.
Did you just say that you want K- Creek to be like every other town and city in Arizona? I think that's what you said.
I want it to be like the twelve or a number that have a four-day week.
Counsel LeBlanc?
Yes, Mark, and safe money is looked at as a perk for the employees who, who work here. Not all of them, of course, still have this four-day week, you know, your, utility people are around all, live most all the time on five days. The extended hour-
The extended hours are definitely a benefit for people who live or who work downtown and have to leave town. And they can come in at seven and get their work, their business done earlier in the day, and when we were, what were we before, eight to 4:30, I believe? Five days a week, well, that causes people to lose money to actually come in. Those hours can be a inconvenience. So I think overall, the people in the years, since we've done this, have become accustomed to it. I don't see any reason to change it and would be opposed to that.
Counselor Lewski.
Well, I guess I expected to see an analysis done. And we got a piece of paper, white paper, that goes back to 2009. I doubt it's reflective of 2016. But maybe there are certain services that should be available on Friday, and perhaps they should be staggered. I don't know, because I didn't get any information. So I have no way to make any kind of a decision if it's good, bad, or indifferent. And how many is just don't really work for me? I like to see detail, I like to see something done that shows if we save basically $8,000 in 2009 by turning off electricity, you could also go to a four-day, perhaps in the summer. I see the commercial corridor, because it begins to take off, that people want answers. I know that there aren't a few folks in our town that work five days. They are there because their workload is there. So maybe there's a balance somewhere along the line. But without any kind of an analysis to know how many folks come in for certain types of support services, I certainly did not know that the town marshal worked all weekend as well, until you said it. But I think you made some comment that he would be working a few hours, but I never got that out of you. I don't really have a discussion. So that's the kind of data I'm looking for. I can't make any kind of decision based on nothing, basically. I haven't seen anything.
Well, Mayor, just a couple of points. Law enforcement, fire services, law enforcement is contracted to the sheriff's, relevant to providing subscriptions, excuse me. Most of our concerns have been the water distribution, and those guys work five days on call, they have an on-call system for Saturdays and Sundays, so those are covered. So most of the folks that deal with the professional, the 10-hour weeks, in the office, we do open at seven, I know a lot of contractors, folks doing business for residents, and a lot of residents like to come before work. When we used to be open at four to 8:30, I even would not be with me with a planner or building inspector or what have you, because they're at work. We open those hours and they tend to come and do business at that time. I don't know what the savings are, $20,000, but we do experience savings because we shut everything down on the Fridays. So I think it works well here in Cape Creek, to be honest with you, because most of the folks, whether it's myself, or the town marshal, or the planning director, we're 24/7, people have comments or concerns, they either contact me or those folks directly red bone. My town marshal's not on patrol, don't be confused, he's not out there every day on patrol. Does he assist in that sometimes? Yes, that's what we contract this, the sheriff's service for that. But he does law enforcement aspects that we require in town, he also does code enforcement aspects. And there are times when folks, people are doing things on Saturdays and Sundays, whether we were here or not, they're going to be doing them all Fridays. And the marshal does come up on those days. And he does come on our hard service at times, if they're doing things that shouldn't be doing elsewhere.
Vice Mayor Lewski, anything?
You know, I didn't discuss anything, you can, it's not an intangible position on either side, but frankly, anecdotally, at least, you know, I've never had anybody call, and I got a call from this one guy and a couple of another guy. I don't see that as changing what has worked for employees and is good for the employees and builds, you know, I think, mine been the guy that you left an email with, said, well, you don't serve the employees of the town, you serve the people of the town. Well, what I explained to him was that a lot of people in town like to come in early before they go, you know, get off, and nobody's really complained. And if you have no turnover or very low turnover and you have happy employees, then you are serving the town because they're going to do their work, they're not going to have chips on their shoulders, and we're all going to get along better. And they're going to get along with the citizens better. And so, I don't know if it, I was here for Leachings This, when we were hit with the recession. I don't know if it was permanent or not, but if it works and there's not a big outcry, and I don't see objectively a problem, I don't see why we should change it and upset people for no good reason. It seems imperative to me, after seven years, to just say, you guys come in five days and lose your second job and make life just a little bit harder because, you know, we know you're all overpaid as public employees, which is baloney too. So, that's mine.
I agree with the vice mayor for what may be helpful to council is, take a couple of minutes during the upcoming, we can talk to the staff, they're the ones in the trenches, and the four-day week works well for them. I don't have any direction to give, particularly pardon.
Yeah, I just wonder if Gary is here? Who is here?
Carter?
Carter, yeah.
He's been here for 36 years.
He's not moving, he's not moving right now, all right?
He worked with Vice Mayor Steve Lamar on the first planning commission. Kathy Davis was the mayor, and Steve's memory is as good as I think it is. He might remember the guy. And his response to me was, nobody explained it to me the way you and Steve did.
Right, okay. Well, I have no particular personal interest in changing it. I thought it was worth a conversation, discussion, and I think we've had it.
Okay, great, we have that. I'm going to ask council to adjourn the council session, we're going to take a recess, reset the room, and then council is going to begin to look at the general plan. To let people know, I'm going to have council spend no more than an hour tonight on the general plan, and let us not panic, we have two other workshops coming up, so there'll be plenty of time. We'll get as far as we can, we may only get through one page, and if that's it, we'll go. Motion to adjourn at the council. So we'll still move.